Hello, everyone. This is the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs and a joint chair with Committee on Energy and Intergovernmental Affairs. I am the Chair of Hawaiian Affairs, Tim Richards.
And I work for Tim Richards. My name is and Stanley Chang is my wingman, Vice Chair of Energy.
Okay, thank you. We have one measure before us, Senate Bill 151, relating to Department of Hawaiian Homelands. First up, DHL. Deputy, thank you for being here.
Chair Richards, Chair Wakai, Vice Chair Chang. We are here in strong support of this measure, which would go to support our initiative for geothermal on Hawaiian homelands. I will stand on the written testimony, and if there's any questions, I can be here to address them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, Mariah Yoshizu.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chair Mariah Yoshizu on behalf of Ulupono Initiative. Ulupono stands in strong support of this measure. We think it's a great vital step in advancing our goals towards clean energy as we look to have renewable energy portfolio standard by the 2045 date. And we need to look at all forms of viable energy in order to do that. This legislation will reaffirm the commitment to steward the Hawaiian homelands by enabling DHL to develop these resources and bring long-term economic and environmental benefits to the native Hawaiian beneficiaries. There are similar measures across the country that have demonstrated that geothermal projects in their communities can catalyze economic development, job opportunities, and generate sustainable revenue streams for those communities. We think this investment is a great step to enhance our energy security and also support DHL's mission to improve the welfare of native Hawaiians. Thank you.
Thank you. We have written testimony from Alice Kim in support. Michael Colicini in support. I have Rebecca Dehoff Matsushima. In person, please come up. Identify yourself for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Chairs. My name is Rebecca Dehoff Matsushima. I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric, and we stand in support of the bill and send on our written testimony. Thank you.
Now, we have written opposition from Shelby Pikachu Billionaire. And written support from Keith Neal. Is there anybody else in the chamber like to speak? Come on up.
Aloha, Chair. My history is in the DHL, the necessity of man equality. I'm in opposition at this point. I will sue that $500,000 just paid. I'm also supporting, you know, two dollars each per school loan, where as much as land, so I got two bill checks for school, that was six or seven. Now, I don't consider that as a claim ever. It was a valid to a box study, was that there? The government, because our product of beneficial consultations and public health, which is your website, as well as system. And also start to see Jordan, so the company. So start the drinking. I would like to be able to draw, so that the joint money, they were the most close to which was a little of cost, when he was at, and so that our customers are represented. But actually, the single, I'm going to tell you that was the consultant on this project, that
Thirty first, twenty fifty. So with that, uh, passing with amendments, Chair votes aye.
Members voting on S B one five one, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair is excused, Senator Ihara is excused, Kilkolole votes aye, Senator Decort.
No vote.
Chair recommendations adopted.
Thank you, Chair.
For members of E I G C recommendation, any discussion? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
Okay, so S B one fifty one passed with amendments, Chair there's aye, Vice Chair aye. Senator Decoy is excused, Senator Richards?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted.
Good, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Um, and Deputy, I want some of the questions and concerns that were raised by Ms. Myers, I'd like those addressed. And so I'll put some notes in the committee report to make sure that we have the top story to address some of your concerns. Okay, thank you, that, uh, Hawaiian Electric standard journal.
Hey, I team. Thank you for your patience. We are now convening the Joint Committee on Energy and Governmental Affairs and our friends from the Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs. Yep, there's my wingman, uh, Senator Elifonte, um, I can't ride without him. Uh, we have one bill on this agenda that is Senate Bill three seven one relating to property damage of critical infrastructure facilities. Rest in our testifies this, we have Andrew Martin from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, or this representative. Uh, this submitted testimony in support, Tricia Nakamatsu from the Attorney General's Office.
Good afternoon, Chair Akai, Chair LaFonte, members of the committee, Deputy Attorney General, Tricia Nakamatsu, appearing on behalf of Department of the Attorney General, uh, we did submit comments with suggested amendments to the bill. Uh, perhaps most significant is that we know the bill seems to be limited to electrical power outages. However, the term critical infrastructure is used under section seven oh eight eight ninety, um, and that pertains to computers that are damaged and then affect critical infrastructure systems. Uh, that system actually applies to much more than just electrical power systems. Um, so we would suggest if, um, adopting essentially that definition of critical infrastructure, which applies to um, transportation, gas and power, water, oil, things of that nature. Uh, we did include the definition in our testimony, I believe. Okay, well, we referenced it, I'm sorry, it just references section seven oh eight eight ninety. And by doing so, we feel that this would be a lot more effective in accomplishing what the bill seems to be aimed at doing, which is to uh, prevent and deter uh, damage to the critical infrastructure systems themselves. As I mentioned, section seven oh eight eight ninety two currently only creates those heights and penalties if you just damage or attack or interfere with the computer systems that control those critical infrastructures. Uh, we did have a number of other amendments, um, which, uh, one of which is the state of mind for proving some of the elements, we just felt that it would, um, provide more effective prosecution and take away some of the uh, defenses if someone were to assert that they did not realize their actions would have that extent of damages. Uh, we had a number of other suggestions, but I'm available for questions if any.
Thank you, Tricia. Um, and those in the audience, I failed to, uh, mention at the, at the outset that we're going to have testimony limited to one minute. Uh, so lucky Tricia, you got two minutes there. See what happens when you come early, you get one freebie. Um, next testify Jonathan Gramps for Hawaiian Electric. Oh, welcome, Mr. Gramps.
Stand by our written testimony and strong support of the bill, we welcome the proactive stance.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Gramps. And we also have Jacob Wan, Wansec has submitted a testimony in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill three seven one? If not, members, any questions? Well, okay, good, we will take a brief recess prior to taking a vote. We're reconvening our joint committee on, uh, with energy intergovernmental affairs and our friends from the Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs for decision making on Senate Bill three seven one. The two chairs have conferred and we would like to make a number of, uh, amendments to, to the measure. Um, we would like to take the A G's suggested amendments, um, all except for the last one. So there's three suggested amendments that they have in their testimony. Uh, the fourth amendment they, they suggested was to not to have explicitly put into the, uh, the bill um, the manslaughter and the rationale was that prosecutors could, uh, use that, uh, as a charge if in fact someone passes away due to a lack of access to energy, but we two chairs have conferred, we'd like to make that very explicit and clear to anyone who's going to disrupt our critical infrastructure that you will be charged with manslaughter if someone perishes due to your, uh, negligence or, or ballast there. Um, and also the prosecutor's office from Maui had suggested that, um, water should also be considered as critical infrastructure. So we'd like to add water as another component to this measure, uh, so that we make sure that if someone does the same thing, poisons our water system and someone passes away or dies because of that poisoning, that there will be accountability for that individual who did that terrible uh, action. So those are the suggested amendments, um. And yes, uh, any discussion? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
Senate Bill three seventy one, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Decoy is excused, Senator Richards?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
All.
Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, same recommendation for the Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs. Uh, Chair Akai.
Chair Elifonte?
Aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga, excuse Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Decort?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
So we're adjourned. We are convening the Committee on Energy Intergovernmental and Milit- no, I don't have the military stuff anymore. Committee on Energy and Intergovernmental, uh, Affairs and recklessly it's three fifteen on this Tuesday, January twenty eighth. Um, just a reminder for those who are testifying, you will have one minute to, uh, see why you support or oppose the measures on this agenda. The first bill on this agenda is Senate Bill five eight five relating to the issuance of special purpose revenue bonds to assist Bana Pacific. On a testifiers list, we have Ian Robertson from the Attorney General's Office.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
He's here with us, thank you.
Chair, Vice Chair members, uh, Ian Robertson, Deputy Attorney General. Uh, we offered comments noting that the issuance of these bonds appears as if it would violate Act two six two from, uh, twenty twenty three, which amended Act one eight two, twenty twenty two. Uh, we did include language if, uh, the committee wishes to pass this to avoid that issue and exempt these disauthorization. Uh, we also noted that, um, in our search of, uh, break records, Bana Pacific appears to be registered as an L L C, but we presume that, um, the, uh, the legislature anticipated that Bana Pacific will be reorganized into a corporation as it's reflected in the title of the bill. Thank you. All the available questions?
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Louis Salavaria from Budget and Finance has submitted commentary. Mark Glick from the State Energy Office.
Hawaii Chair's member Maria Tome with the Hawaii State Energy Office representing Mark Glick. We would stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Maria. George Pritchard from Bana Pacific.
Welcome Chairman, members of the committee, my name is George Pritchard, President and CEO of Bana Pacific Inc. I'm here in strong support of S B five eighty five, which will enable the development of our integrated bio gas and green hydrogen facility, a project that is not just innovative, but urgently necessary for Hawaii's energy security and sustainability. Hawaii imports ninety percent of its energy, leaving us vulnerable to volatile markets and supply chain disruptions. Meanwhile, landfills are reaching capacity and wildfires from unmanaged lands pose increasing threats. Our project directly addresses these challenges. Producing one point five million M N B T of renewable natural gas annually, generating four hundred fourteen hundred kilograms a day of green hydrogen to support, uh, clean transportation, capturing and repurposing C O two into the beverage grade C O two and dry ice industry for local support. Beyond environmental benefits, this project creates two hundred plus local jobs, injects twenty million annually into Hawaii's economy while reducing two hundred metric tons of C O two emissions each year. S B five eighty five is a no risk opportunity for the state, utilizing special purpose revenue bonds that are repaid solely from project revenues. This is the kind of forward thinking, high impact investment Hawaii needs.
You're at the end of your time, Mr.
I urge you to pass S B five eighty five and help move Hawaii toward a cleaner, more resilient future. Mahalo for your time. I welcome any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pritchard. Um, I have testimony from William Anderson, Joe Youngker, Carlos Severson, Thomas Tate, Darren Yokoyama and Kyle Onaga, all in support. Uh, is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill five eight five? If not, members, any questions? I have a question. So the A G said that the name on the bill is not in, in, uh, uh, in congruence with the yeah, okay, just want to make sure you're, uh, incorporated, not an L L C, correct?
That's correct. We have incorporated and, uh, the conversion is being done as we speak, uh, with D C C A. So I don't know if when they looked or when that's done, but the L L C has been converted, uh, or is being converted as we speak to a corporation.
Okay, and so you're perfectly happy with the title?
That's correct.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
All right, members, any further discussion of change, questions? Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. We're going to move on to Senate Bill nine six four, and this is regarding waste to energy. On our testifiers list, we have Mark Glick or Maria Tome?
Hawaii Chair members Maria Tome, Hawaii State Energy Office. We have, um, testimony that is supportive of the concept and provides comments and suggestions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maria. Vern Holland has submitted commentary. We have, uh, Mayor Bisson in opposition, Melody Aduhua in opposition. Alan Burdick in opposition, Wayne Tanaka in opposition, Paul Kaikendall also in opposition, Sherry Pollack opposition, Mike Ewal in opposition, wait, oh, sorry, uh, it's your moment, Mike. Thank you for standing by.
No worries. Okay, so hi again. Um, my name is Mike Ewal with Energy Justice Network, joining the overwhelming opposition to S B nine sixty four. Um, incineration is the most expensive and polluting way to manage waste or to make energy. There's not enough ways to build a plant on the smaller items. There are fixed costs with these plants and it will massively increase the waste disposal cost to build incinerators and still have to maintain landfills for the toxic ash. Lifecycle assessments done on the industry, including one done just a few years ago for Hawaii County, looking at their use of H power versus landfills versus recycling their paper and plastics, found that H power is the most harmful by far and that recycling is the best option for the environment and health, even with barging materials to continents. No new incinerators have been built at a new site in this country in thirty years, despite hundreds of attempts. You are not about to change that track record in Hawaii, I can guarantee, because I've been part of many community battles across the country in these past three decades and every time communities win, including just this past weekend in Miami Dade County, where they tried to build the largest one in the nation in that county, it would have cost them over one point five billion. And that's an economy of scale of four thousand tons per day.
Mike, I'm sorry, we are out of time.
Okay, I'll just finish my sentence. The scale you would build would be unaffordable. Uh, that right? Thank you.
Great, thank, thank you for your testimony, Mike. Uh, we have Rebecca Dehoff Matsushima from Hawaiian Electric.
Good afternoon, Chair, Hawaiian Electric stands on, stands on its written comments.
Thank you. Uh, we have Christine Kubat is in opposition. Christopher Dean also in opposite, Christopher Dean might be joining us via Zoom, I teaser, Christopher Dean online?
Yes. Hello.
Welcome, Mr. Dean, you have one minute.
Thank you. I'm Christopher Dean, I'm the president of Recycle Hawaii, the founder of Clean the Pacific and, um, I've submitted written testimony in opposition to this, uh, project. We are against all incineration and waste to energy uh, projects. Um, I would just like to reiterate that we live in a circular universe from the atomic level to the solar system orbiting the galactic core, everything is cyclical except for one thing. Our economy, which is linear. We extract, we consume, and then we dispose, and then we repeat. And we live on a finite sphere. That behavior is going to lead to and have included in my written testimony, a paper submitted to the, uh, National Institute of Health that addresses the behavioral problems of humanity in dealing with a linear type of economy like this. And I would encourage everyone to
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Open that and read it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I, uh, don't have any indication of anyone else wishing to testify, but in looking at the written testimonies submitted, I counted, uh, twenty four in opposition and eight in support. Is there anyone else here that wishes to testify on this measure? Yes, thank you, Chair Akai and, uh, members Richards and Favela, remember it's Ted Bowden and, uh, he represents the Climate Protectors Hawaii. Uh, as some other speakers have said, uh, let me say upfront, I respectfully oppose, um, recognizing, um, the desire of, of some to pass this bill, uh, but I oppose because, as state, as others have stated, um, when trash for, uh, as a way to handle this is very expensive and very harmful to the environment, uh, which is where my group comes in. Uh, but in addition to that, it's like this bill is urging, is requiring the, um, Energy Office to tell the counties what to do with their trash. Um, and that's going to make it function. So I wonder why the state is stepping in on something um, this controversial to order the states, uh, to order the counties to go in a certain way. As I indicated, there wasn't the capacity on other counties to move to those, running on a while with the Covanta contract. So, uh, this seems to me like a poor idea. As much as I appreciate for the energy and the need for the power, thank you, and thank you. Appreciate. Anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill nine six four? Members, any questions of those, uh, that's the, the, the fire, Senator Favela, Mr. Bowden?
Let me address a couple of, maybe just a couple of your concerns and other people's concern. This energy plant does not have any C O two or biochemicals coming out of the stack. They have high tech brushes, it's going to clean it, nothing coming out. I'll give you one later on, you guys can look, okay? Another one is Covanta right now is thinking about trying to do a waste to energy plant in the back. Ash, you're talking about it will be recycled and put into construction material. And going for the neighbor islands, what is Maui going to do with the contamination waste that they have there? So I'm not telling them to build a plant that wouldn't fit Maui County, not asking them to build a plant in Hilo that they gotta drive all the way to Kona to dump their rubbish every day to Hilo. There are always one way to dump trash. How clean for an environment that you're using diesel? Chance of the truck breaking down, truck of the truck dumping rubbish on the side of the road and having a complete true waste to energy plan. So the research that was done on this and I listened to a lot of testimony and I see it's very inaccurate. Very inaccurate because the waste to energy plan that is proposed to here, you know, why the state is proposing this to the city? The city doesn't have a, do, what to do without having landfills. Right now they want to put it over an offer. You want that, you want that, you want that? Exactly. That's the reason why this was proposed, to have a clean, firm energy plan. No windmills, no solar farms. Clean, firm energy. That's what it is. And then you guys talk about the cost, you get the federal government to subsidize that our state for whatever reason, we're not tapping to clean for our energy waste to energy plant at all. We'll subsidize it. There's something that I'm going to work with the Energy Office. There's a lot of stuff you guys talking about cost, it will not cost the county amount of money people saying, because we'll have federal subsidized. And then if the state have land that can work with the counties, it will work on that here legislatively. But all of the stuff that we're seeing to here is a little bit off of what the bill was intended. It was to help the colonies and the community get rid of their biohazard waste that they cannot get into a landfill. And one of them was the Hino. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Do you want me to respond or, uh, I appreciate your comments?
Yeah.
Um, thank you very much. And I, and I recognize the, the, the challenges that counties all face. Uh, I would say that, uh, this bill only applies to the other counties besides Waho. Um, and I would also say that the idea of using the toxic ash that comes out of the trash plant uh, on the roads is a really bad idea. When we're spreading around construction material, I don't see it as being manageable. Construction material, they will not have any contact with the material. You could, on the ground, it's seen it, and the material, that's, I'm, yes. You will work with the material, so, um, look at that, you should, your comments, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Senator Richard? Ted Bowden?
Yeah, since you're up here and ask you a quick question.
Sure.
There's been a lot of evolution over time and I've visited, um, waste energy and, uh, furnaces on the mainland when I was in county. With the evolution of technology, in your opinion, have we gotten better as far as the, the toxic concerns?
In the sense, in the sense of, in my opinion, in the sense of gotten better, um, the place where trash is a good idea. I'm afraid of the comments in the Attorney General, who's a national expert on this. And if you can tell you that the, the, you know, he did say today that nobody has cited a new trash plant uh, incinerator in the United States on a new site in thirty years. And the reason is because the technology is not there in a safe way and the communities don't want it. So that's my answer.
Okay, and, uh, I appreciate that Ted and thanks for your input. Um, I think what Senator Favela is highlighting, we have a problem. We're an island. What are we going to do? And so I appreciate seeking the way forward on this, but, um, Senator, ask one more question from Mr. Ewal.
Sure, of course.
Okay, thanks Ted. Mr. Ewal?
Do you enjoy reading us online? Good.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, just question, following up on that and listening to Mr. Bowden, uh, opinion concerning where we are with the technology for cleaning things up?
Sure. So most incinerators have four pollution control devices. Each one takes out different pollutants. Now, H power, their two older plants are missing half of those four pollution control devices. So that's the status quo is, is pretty far behind. But E P A was poised to come out with new um, regulations for this industry last month that got punted back a year. So it'll be December of this year. Maybe, we'll, we'll see what this administration does with that. But what happened is E P A picked the weakest of three options that they were considering for eight of the nine pollutants and the middle one for the ninth. So even once these new regulations come out, which were supposed to be updated every five years, but we're currently still running on two thousand and six regulations, um, it'll be at least twenty twenty nine before they come out and they're far too weak, um, to be anything that would be considered modern or, or clean if that were such a thing in this industry. Uh, but what Senator Favela had said about there's no C O two coming out, no other pollutants coming out, that's patently false. I just, just did a whole report for, um, the Miami Dade County situation, looking at the four thousand time per day incinerator that they were proposing, that they just, um, decided to abandon. And that report looks at the cleanest and newest one in the country, which is the second one they have in West Palm Beach, Florida. Models that with newest, the newest regulations that almost came out, so they would have to lower two of the pollutants forty percent to meet those regulations. And even with that, be, which will be the strictest in the country that this has ever seen in, in the U S. It would still be one of the largest air polluters in Miami Dade County.
So let me stop you there. If you have data on this, I'd like to see it and ask you, send it to the chair so we could review it.
Sure, I'll be happy to send it to each other.
Thank you very much, thank you, Chair.
Information. Any other questions? Just, Senator Favela?
So, well, yeah, um, so H power is nowhere near, H power should have been shut down a long time ago. Technology was pulled when we built the third boiler. Um, I'm looking at data that I have here and I'll give you a packet too. Emissions that will come out and C O two, again, guys, is not dangerous. For hell, no matter what anybody say, without C O two, we cannot live. Okay, just to let you know, but the emissions of C O two, so seven hundred tons of, uh, waste on the C O two emissions is none, depending on what actually you use and technology you use. I'll do, you can shake your head, that's cool. I don't want to be argumentative, but I get the data that I've been doing this for the last four years. So Singapore, all these other countries, including Canada, is using this. They have one, um, idea in Singapore that they have a ski slope on the top. And you know why that is? The atmosphere of the, of the air coming out of the steam is so hot, it hits the atmosphere and makes snow. So I, I did a lot of research on this and I understand you, you saying what you said, but the information that I got is, is more broad on how it is, uh, we behind, how are you even behind the times? To looking at windmills and everything else. If it wasn't a good idea, and why is Covanta right now introducing to do a waste to energy plant? And try and move away, not closing H power, but right now thinking about putting out one bid for a waste to energy plant. And I asked him, can I support that waste to energy plant? Unless you're going to have a time that you're going to close H power. And they said they're not. So again, if the idea wasn't there, then they wouldn't be trying to do it. That's all. Thank you, Chair.
Would you like a response to that, please?
Uh, was there a question? No, okay, thank you, Mike. Um, we're going to move on everyone to the next measure on the agenda that is Senate Bill nine nine six relating to renewable energy. Uh, our testifiers list, we have, uh, Michael Angelo from D C C A, consumer advocate.
And Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, uh, my name is Michael Angelo, I'm the Executive Director of the depart, of the, uh, Division of Consumer Advocacy at the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. Stand by our testimony, uh, providing comments. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Michael. Mark Glick or Maria Tome from Energy Office? Thank you, Maria. Leo Asansha from the P U C.
Eric Lewis, Leo Asansha, Chair of the P U C, will stand on our written testimony, uh, in support and providing comments.
Thank you, Leo. Rebecca Dehoff Matsushima from Hiko.
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Rebecca Dehoff Matsushima with, um, Vice President of Resource Procurement for Hawaiian Electric. I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric in opposition to S B nine nine six unless it's amended. Um, we do have concerns that, um, this bill could unnecessarily raise rates for our customers and we believe that the solutions in S B fifteen oh one and H B nine seven four would be better for our customers overall. Um, that being said, we did pro, um, provide an amendment that, um, if power producers were required to provide clear and convincing evidence that the increase in costs, uh, to their projects are due to the company's credit rating, we would, um, be okay with the bill.
Thank you, Rebecca. Frederick Redal has submitted testimony support and Sandra Larson also in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill nine nine six? If not, members, any questions? Leo, that's a quick question. Hawaiian Electric wants to put in specific language, I guess, to kind of trigger uh, this process and potential rate increases with clear and convincing evidence. But considering that the PUC would have to kind of vet whatever the case might be from the power producer, you would determine, right, if there's a rational reason to uh, increase the, the rate, correct?
Correct.
So we'll put this language in there. You would, I mean, it's not like you're going to arbitrarily say, yeah, here, submit an application and we're going to bump you up.
Correct. What, what um, King was proposing, um, we kind of read that as like a requirement? Like just another piece of information that would come in. You're correct, right? We will take all of that information and then run through our decision.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay. So, got it. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the next measure. That is Senate Bill ten sixty-eight relating to renewable energy. On our testifiers list, we have Mark Flick or Maria Tome?
I'm on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Uh, Rebecca Dehoff Matsushima from Hiko? In support. Yep. Mariah Yoshizu?
Thank you Chair and members. Mariah Yoshizu on behalf of the Lulukono Initiative. Um, we stand in strong support of this bill as we look to reach our hundred percent renewable portfolio standard by twenty forty-five. We need to look at all forms of viable energy and geothermal is a cheap firm um, resource that we can tap into for that. We also appreciate the um, community aspects of this bill in emphasizing community engagement to build trust in the program. Thank you so much for hearing this measure.
Sure. Thank you, Mariah. Noel Morin has submitted testimony support. Alice Kim in support, Neil, excuse me, Keith Neil in support, and Peter Sternley also in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill ten sixty-eight? Uh, okay. Any questions, members? Okay, um. Mariah. Since uh, we, yeah, Leo Morin um, suggested that uh, we put um, UH kind of in charge of this program rather than as outlined in the bill, the Hawaii State uh, Energy Office. What are your thoughts on that?
Um, from my understanding, I think UH has been doing a lot of research on that, but I think working in conjunction with the HSEO will be really beneficial. I think that anything that supports moving geothermal forward and, and whoever is having maybe the most background or the most resources, resources in that is something that we would support.
Okay, so you're punting.
I mean, I know that Nicole Lautse has been working, I believe, with HSEO. I know she's worked with a couple of departments on this bill. So I know they are very connected. Um, but I'm, I can't say which, um, I guess I would have to get back to you and, and which would be our recommendation. Thank you.
Sorry, Maria. Oh, no, sorry, Maria, not Maria. So I forgot you're in the audience there. What are your thoughts on um, the suggestion that the leader on this effort is going to be UH Groundwater and Geothermal Resource Center? And that you would be kind of uh, playing second seat to, to them? Should it be the other way around as, as written or is it as written now with you as the lead better or should UH be the, the lead on this?
I would need to check and get back to you on that.
So we keep it as it is and then maybe by the next committee, if it gets there, um, you can.
I'll see what our.
Swaps.
Would have been.
Seats.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Members, any further questions on this measure? We are going to move on to the last measure on this agenda. That is Senate Bill ten seventy-one relating to energy financing. On our testifiers list, we have Michelangelo from DCCA.
Stand by our written comments and support.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Gwen Yamamoto Lau from Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. Great, thank you Gwen. Leo Ascension?
There, members, who stand on our written testimony in support and provide comments?
Thank you, Leo. Uh, we have Susan Roberts Emery from Green Party Hawaiis in support. Uh, oh. Are you? Oh, no, sorry. Um, Cherry Pollack? From three fifty Hawaii is in support. Forrest Frisell also from Shifting Energy in support. Paul Orum from Photon Works in support. Steve Lark Parsons from the Kauai Climate Action Coalition in support. Rocky Mold is Rocky Mold here? Nope. Okay, well, Rocky Mold from the Solid Association is in support. Leah Larrabee. As indicated, she might be here, but uh, she's not. And she is in support. She's from the Climate Change Meditation Adaptation Commission. Uh, Ted Peck from Honolulu has made testimony support. William Gisi from Solari Corporation, Solaray Corporation in support. Wendell Choi in support. Is there Villa Floor in support? Mike, excuse me, Donna Fisher in support. Michelle Napioli in support and I've got a whole bunch of people in support. Is there anyone in the room that wants to testify on this measure? If not, members, any questions? Okay, we will break briefly before taking the vote. Thank you for your patience. We're about to take the vote for the Committee on Energy and Intergovernmental Affairs on our three fifteen agenda. First item on this agenda is Senate Bill five eight five relating to the issuance of special purpose revenue bonds to assist Bonapacific Incorporated. Uh, we're going to take the AG suggested language, the language that cited up uh, that it's going to be a carve-out of Act one eighty-two. And we did confirm that this is the proper name. So the suggestion is to pass this measure with that AG's um, amendment. Suggested amendment. Any discussion? If not, Senator Richards, I vote yes.
Chair votes aye. Senator Chang is excused. Senator Decoy is excused. Senator Favela?
Aye.
And Senator Richards votes aye. Uh, Chair, you have three in favor. Motion is adopted.
Fantastic. Okay, we're going to move on to the next measure. That is Senate Bill nine six four relating to waste to energy. Uh, we had a very lively discussion on this measure. Uh, and I wondered what's with all the tools in the toolbox? So if uh, waste your energy, I mean, there's not, no perfect uh, feed into renewable energy out there. And if this is still additive to our aspirations to get to a hundred percent renewable, willing to uh, move this measure along. I will make one amendment though. Um, right now it's a mandated uh, for the HSEO to uh, establish a public-private partnership. So I'm going to partnership, I'm going to change that to may establish uh, that just in case, if there is no possibility of a public-private partnership, they're not going to be forced to come up with one. They hopefully can explore it and um, will find something that will make Senator Favela the happiest man in Hawaii. Uh, so that's the suggested amendment, just to change it and add a may uh, before the establishment of a public partner, partnership language. Any discussion?
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, definitely heard the comments, questions, concerns environmentally. And I am sensitive to that. That being said, I agree with Chair Wakai on this because I want to explore all that. So I'm going to be supporting it with reservations, knowing that we're not done on this, this uh, measure yet. So with that.
Uh, if you could please take the vote to pass it with amendments.
Okay, um, Senator, uh, Chair Wakai?
Yes.
Chair Wakai votes aye. Senator Chang is excused. Senator Decoy is excused. I vote reservations. Uh, Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair, you have three in favor. Me- measure is adopted.
Great, thank you. We're going to move on to the next measure. That is Senate Bill nine nine, nine six relating to renewable energy. Uh, I would like to pass this measure out with uh, technical non-substantive uh, amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Richards, I vote yes.
Chair votes aye. Senator Chang's excused. Decoy is excused. I vote aye. Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair, you have three in favor. Motion is adopted.
Thank you. Um, next measure is Senate Bill ten sixty-eight relating to renewable energy. This one focuses on geothermal and I'd like to pass this measure out with just technical non-substantive uh, amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Richards, I vote yes.
Passing with amendments, Chair votes aye. Chang is excused. Decoy is excused. I vote aye. Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair, you have three in favor. Motion is adopted.
Fantastic. The last measure on this agenda is Senate Bill ten seventy-one relating to energy financing. Uh, see the wisdom of us helping those who might have some financial struggles and putting and joining the rest of us in moving forward on renewable energy and solar is a, is a good option for them. And if they can't afford it now, then uh, this program will help them be a part of the solution. So I'd like to move this measure out with just technical non-substantive amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Richards, I vote yes.
Chair votes aye. Chang and Decoy are excused. I vote aye. Favela?
Aye.
Chair, you have three in favor. Motion is adopted.
All right, thank you. We are adjourned.